Do we have a... You ready? Are we ready?
Hello? Hello?
Is that your wake-up call?
Hello, I'm on the phone.
On the phone now? Okay, great. It's 9:30 a.m. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll have the invocation, Supervisor Bishop, and Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for our great country and we ask your divine wisdom for all of our leaders here today. May we be given the wisdom and courage in the decisions we make. We ask that you guide and direct our meeting so that it's full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. We thank you for the accomplishments of reaching our goals. We pray these things in your mighty name. Amen.
Amen. If you'll please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Board of Supervisors made by motion recess into executive session to receive legal advice from the Board's attorney. Any item contained in this agenda pursuant to Arizona Revised Statutes 38-431.03, portions A, 3, and 4. Call for a motion for an executive session to be held December 4th, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. for discussion and consultation with the legal counsel in accordance with ARS 38-431.03, portions A, 3, and 4, to discuss items noticed on the agenda with an asterisk. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Onto official business. Discussion of pending or contemplated legal litigation claims and demand. Mr. Esplin?
Nothing to report.
Committee and their legislative reports. We'll start to my left, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All I have to report is that we had a Lake Havasu MPC meeting. Lake Havasu's been awarded the Transportation statewide meeting next year, so we'll be having that in Havasu, I believe, in October.
Thank you. Supervisor Bishop?
Thank you. Supervisor Watson and I attended the County Supervisors Association Director Meeting in Phoenix. The CSA priorities adopted proposals and legislative issues were discussed and voted upon, including water issues. Allowing the Central Arizona Project to purchase the transfer of fourth priority Colorado River water is wrong. It takes away from wealth and opportunity from the Colorado River corridor and gives it to the three counties of the urban areas. I'm happy to report that we gained unanimous support to oppose such a permanent transfer of Colorado River water during that meeting. And also, earlier, I attended the CSA Medium County Caucus, and we elected Yuma County Supervisor Lynn Pancrazee as the chairman, and I was elected as the vice chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Bishop. Supervisor Rankin?
Thank you, Chairman Watson. I just want to talk about, for a few moments, a situation that's happening in Bullhead City that is of great concern, and that is the infestation of cat is fly. It's nearing the end of its cycle, but it is a terrible problem that is affecting people who not only live along the river, but it's also affecting Laughlin, Nevada, and there's a coalition put together. They've resurrected the pest abatement district. They've hired an entomologist who is working with Arizona Game and Fish and U.S. Fish and Wildlife. One of the solutions is to put more fish in the water. Thank goodness, we stopped them from ending that program, as everybody knows. But because of that short lapse of time that there were no fish in the water, it created yet another problem because no environmental impact study was completed or even thought about. So I'm helping out with that. I just wanted it on the record because there's a lot of people in Bullhead City that really don't understand why nothing is changing. It's one of those things that government cannot solve. We are not Mother Nature, but we're doing our very best to find out how we can mitigate this terrible problem. And it is a terrible problem, and I just want to reiterate to those people who are living it every day that not only is it a problem, but we believe it is a potential health problem, which, you know, I won't get into right now, but we're studying that as well, so that might come back in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Wakamoto, do you have a report this morning?
I do. I wanted to thank our three communities for all the support that they've given us on this transfer of water issue. The people have come out, the chambers have come out, the mayors and the city council have all come out as a united front, and it's made a difference. People are actually aware and writing to the governor handwritten letters. So thank you for all that support.
Thank you, Supervisor Wakamoto. And I'd like to just add a small amount to that. Last week, we met with members of the Central Arizona Project, and those discussions were basically informational. And I'd like to thank those members from the CAP Board to make that trip up here. But in the same token, I'd like to say that Mojave County, along with its, all the cities in Mojave County, are opposed to the fourth priority transfer of water from the Colorado River to the Central Arizona Project. I just wanted to make that clear, that we're all united, we're against it, we're going to do anything we can to stop it, and that's pretty much where we're at. Onto the administrator's report. Mr. Hendricks?
No reports today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. Approval of the October 16th, 2017. Board Supervisors' regular minutes?
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any questions? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried unanimously. We'll go on to the call to the public. Those wishing to address the Board at the call to the public regarding matters not on the agenda must fill out and submit to the clerk of a call to the public request to speak for him located in the back of the room prior to the meeting. Action taken as a result of public comments will be limited to responding to criticism, referral to staff, or placing a matter on a future agenda. Comments are restricted to items not on the regular agenda, with the exception of consent agenda, and must relate to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. First person signed up for the call to the public? Marion Friedline?
Well, Board. Ms. Bishop, I'd like to thank you for your letter regarding the bond issue. I'd like to... I never understood...
Please give us your name and address for the record.
My name is Marion Friedline. I live at 4920 North Davis Road, Golden Valley. And I was under the impression that I had paid a bond for my water, and that I was entitled to water. And I went to previous board planning issues over the years, and I was told I was on a phase five whereby I would eventually have water over the years. Now, this has been going on for several years. And I moved here in 2006. I put my house on property and everything, and I was told I would have water for all these years. Now, I never was notified by the county or the water company that I was an abandoned project. And I've been to several planning commissions. So after receiving this letter from Mrs. Bishop, I was really shocked to hear that my project was abandoned in 2009. So you can understand that I was really upset. So I really, you know, after going to all these project meetings, it is really upsetting.
Rowa Takamoto.
I really don't think this is very nice. I don't think you do your work very well. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Wayne Holland?
Good morning. Wayne Holland, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I'm the chairman and supervisor. I get, we have a, I've been contacting the Keep Arizona Beautiful Commission, organization, whatever, and they are scheduling a meeting sometime after the first of the year for the Rural Environmental Action Plan meeting. And I'm hoping that all of you can attend. I know it might take a special meeting or something for all to do that, but I think it's an important thing to everybody to attend. And then, second thing, we have, the sheriff did emphasis patrol back, and I believe it was May, for illegal dumping Golden Valley and parts of Kingman and surrounding areas. And I haven't heard any statistics or anything like that back yet, so I'm just kind of curious if it did any good or not, or what became of it. And then also, we were supposed to be working getting new fines, or more fines, or different fines posted in the county for illegal dumping. I haven't seen any of those yet either, so I was just wondering what the status of that was. And as I talked about last time with the free trash days that we do here, Kingman has decided to not do any more of those, at least for six months to a year, and try something else that maybe will work better. So that's kind of backed up my comment on the last one. And last of all, today, we've got a beautiful building out here and everything for everything, but it'd be nice if you could get Public Works to maybe re-line the parking stalls out there with the new paint. Would make the outfit look a lot better, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Kathleen Mishler?
Kathleen Mishler, 5485 North Laguna Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. Good morning. As the treasurer of the Political Action Committee, MAF, Mojaveans for Accountability, Transparency, and Honor, I put out some inaccurate information about the Golden Valley Improvement District, but I obtained that information from Open Books Transparency on the official Mojave County website. I'm assuming that we pay for this service, and it is important that we have open books and that we understand what's going on in the county. I would just appreciate it if we could have more accurate information, and maybe someone could find out why it's not right. All right? Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Robinson?
Steve Robinson, 3967 North Mormon Flat Road in Golden Valley. There's two issues I want to address. First, I've noticed that the policies or procedures of the Board requires that people submit their request to speak form before the meeting, and that's well and good. It has been the policy until recently to allow people, if they come in late or something like that, to go ahead and turn it in, but in the last couple meetings, I've noted that all the forms were pulled up precisely at 9:30, and the people coming in late weren't allowed to speak. And I don't believe the Board wants to convey a thought that we're not wanting people to speak. And Chairman Watson, you were very gracious last week, because you, or last meeting, because you did allow several people who came in late or didn't sign up properly to speak. So I think that's one issue that should be taken a look, that you be more gracious to the public because sometimes they don't always make it here on time. The other issue is, I've been looking at the, in 2005, the Board approved the automation fee for planning and zoning. And that fee has been charged on everybody that files. It's a $40 fee. Thankfully, it went back to $40 last meeting. But I have been noticing in the budget, well, first off, that account is up to $450,000 cash balance. But over the last several years, through the general fund, the cost of technology has been charged to the district's general, or the department's own fund. So there's basically been a building up of a slush fund because we haven't charged that fund for the technology services that it's supposed to be providing. So I would think that, based upon what I've seen, you know, there's been at least two or three $400,000 worth of expenditures since 2005. So that is money that should have come out of the technology fund for building inspection and planning and zoning. And I would encourage the Board to take a look at that issue because that's $400,000, $450,000 that should be back in the general fund. Thank you.
Keith Servillas?
Good morning. Good morning. Keith Servillas, 2093, Lariat, Bullhead draw, Bullhead City. I'm here this morning representing the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. The Coast Guard Auxiliary is the civilian uniformed division of the Coast Guard. We do everything that the Coast Guard does, other than law enforcement, and we don't carry weapons. But other than that, we assist the Coast Guard with all of their missions. And I'm here on two quick points. The first one, we have flotillas in Lake Havasu City, Bullhead City, Kingman. In our division, there's two up in Las Vegas as well. But the Kingman flotilla right now is in need of a new meeting space. Where they are currently meeting is not quite accessible or really appropriate for where they are. So if there's anyone, any staff member, that I can be referred to to assist in gaining a new once-a-month meeting space, would be greatly appreciated. The other matter that I'm here about, I'm the incoming flotilla commander for the flotilla in Bullhead City. I'm also the incoming division staff officer for Human Resources. I also do human resource. We wear many hats. But I'm also the HR person for Bullhead City. And I'm here mainly to put a call to the public for recruitment. As I'm sure you know, we had fatalities this year on the waters in Lake Havasu, on the Colorado River, on Lake Mojave. There is a need. We just completed an auxiliary-wide study on life jacket, life jackets in general, but who's wearing on what facilities, on what boats. And anecdotally, we saw more life jackets on animals and dogs than on people. It's pretty close to reality. There is a need, and we have a need for membership. So I will be at the back of the room. I'll give out a quick address if anybody's interested in participating in any of the flotillas anywhere within the county. The website is www.join.cgaux.org, or they can contact me, cell phone area code 773-931-0091. That's a Great Lakes area code, if you're looking. The only requirements for membership is to be at least 17 years old, a U.S. citizen, and you can pass a basic background check for initial membership. Other than that, the Auxiliary will provide all the training. You don't need marine experience. You don't have to be a boat owner. We will set you up to succeed. And as the math plays out, unfortunately, there is, as I said, a great need. Lake Mead National Park has been noted as the most deadly national park in the country because of the deaths. We do need membership to help. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mishler.
Chairman Watson, may I say something? That was so interesting, and I think so important. Maybe we could put it on a future agenda for a full presentation so the public can get an idea and the media can write about it? Do you think we can do that?
Sure, it'd be fine with me.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Servillas, if you'll see either Supervisor Bishop or myself after the meeting, I'm sure we can find someplace for you to hold your meetings. Thank you. Leann Hogland-Smith?
Good morning. Leann Hogland-Smith, 3981 South Centennial Road, Golden Valley, Arizona. First, just a wish of abundant and peaceful Thanksgiving to Chairman Watson and the Board because we do indeed live in a blessed country. I asked Supervisor Angus to poll items 15 and 16, and I can address it very quickly, is that my comments aren't directed to any one individual. They're based on over 40 years of management experience, 20 of which I've been an entrepreneur working with multi-billion dollar companies. I think the consolidation of the role is efficient and effective. What I'm really concerned about is that when you evaluate employees, you look at experience, you look at education, you look at comparable salaries. And the thing that you need to look at government is the income of your constituents. Mojave County has a 20% poverty rate. When people start seeing these salaries being promoted, it really causes concern. Many employees get cars, they get cell phones. Your constituents are paying for their own cars, they're paying for their own fuel, they're paying for their own cell phones. And I understand national numbers, but national numbers look at for-profit industries and not-for-profit industries, as well as government. There has to be some balance. And I think sometimes we lose sight of that when we're in government. Because the reason people leave organizations is because of other people. This is consistent research for the last 20 years. Money may be a factor, but it's the culture of the organization that really determines if I want to stay or if I actually want to put an application into an organization. And the other concern is that when you start reading your state audit reports, the IT department has had specific repetitive issues since 2013. Why in the world would you be giving raises when these issues continually show up? In the private industry, you're rewarded for performance, rewarded for results. The results aren't there. That is a big red flag. When I was in private industry for five years during President Carter's administration, I didn't see a raise because in the private industry, it's about profits. If there aren't any profits, you don't get an increase. It's not your tenure that counts, it's whether you're making money. And remember, every time you get a raise, it's out of our pockets as taxpayers. And I really want you to start looking at having a lean organization where everyone is doing the very best is doing the very best, because research continues to say that about 25 to 50% of your employees are not giving eight hours' work for eight hours of pay. Only about 25% do that. Thank you for this, and please consider.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The following items listed under the consent agenda will be considered as a group and acted upon by one motion with no separate discussion of said items, unless a board member so requests. In that event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Starting at my left, Supervisor Johnson, anything to pull?
Item 12, sir.
Supervisor Bishop?
Nothing.
Supervisor Wakamoto?
She's disconnected.
Is disconnected, all right. Supervisor Angus?
Since Ms. Hogland, you spoke about 16, so we're cool, so I have nothing.
Okay. And I have nothing either. So we have item 12. Chairman, entertain a motion for the acceptance of, the exception of item 12.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number 12.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. On to item 12, Supervisor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is for lowering the mileage fees for the county vehicles. I, I'm curious, we have a budget line item, 60312100, and the ending budget for the last three years has not been all that well. Is the Finance Department here?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Johnson, this proposal is being put forth by Steve Lutowski out of Public Works. He's the one that did the analysis. And it's my understanding that it's based on a little stabilization of fuel, fuel taxes and a reevaluation of what we're charging. And I would ask if it would be acceptable to you to have him come up and address your questions.
Sure.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, members of the board, Supervisor Johnson. This proposal pertains to our 216 assigned fleet vehicles that are distributed among the county departments. It considers, in recent years, a surplus of revenue as it relates to our budgeted expenses for certain items that are subject to expense fluctuation, namely, the largest item being unleaded fuel. We have seen, with the last couple of fiscal years, including this one, two one-time appropriations from the 603 Fund to the general fund. One in FY17, a little over $900,000. And then this past, past fiscal year 18, the board appropriated $540,000 from the 603 Fund to the general fund. And as a result, the 603 cash balance has, in fact, dropped. But in looking at the expenses minus those one-time appropriations, in FY17, the 603 Fund would have realized an expense, I should say, revenue surplus, over $200,000. So that tasked me, as director, in overseeing the Fleet Management Division and the overall 603 Fund, in reassessing the fixed fee, which is $75 per month, regardless of driving a single mile, and then the mileage fee, which is 39 cents per mile, which is, of course, driven by driving. And I ascertained that, at least for FY18, for the final eight months, the remaining two-thirds of this year, that, one, aligning our fixed fee with our actual fixed costs, meaning that if no assigned vehicles were operated countywide, if we just didn't operate vehicles, there's still a fixed fee, a fixed expense, namely, with personnel that's being carried. So I entertained and put forward for the board's consideration a fixed fee that better aligns with our actual fixed costs, so that those could be assured to be recovered. The variable fee speaks more to the variable costs, meaning the vehicle maintenance, repair, as well as the fuel, of course. And I found that the fee of 39 cents per mile, because of currently where the fuel expenses are, and, and not what we're seeing in previous years, can be lowered to 25 cents. And this particular proposal would create a savings to the county of, of approximately $155,000. It would have been $233,000 for the full calendar year, but we only have two-thirds remaining in this calendar year. So a total of $155,000 to the collective county departments, including the sheriff.
Okay. Another part of my question is with, with this cut, this is basically fleet, where we're going at, right?
These, Supervisor Johnson, pertain to the county's assigned vehicles, so yes, they are assigned throughout many different county departments. There are certain county departments, including my own, that have special assigned vehicles, which means that those departments are responsible for budgeting for their own expenses, for vehicle maintenance, repair, and fuel use.
And our, and our fleet people, especially with their mechanics and stuff, have to have special licensing and all that? They have to stay up on the mechanics and everybody?
That's correct. We're proud to say that we represent, you know, the mechanics in such a manner that they maintain, you know, certifications, as well as required licensing, so that they're positioned.
And I guess what is bothering me is that here we are, looking to cut this, which I'm all in favor of cutting wherever we can cut, but when other departments are using their revenues to compensate their employees, who haven't been compensated in a long time, this department, I don't think it's been seeing the mechanics that are keeping our vehicles on the road, and I think we're having a hard time getting people in. I, I just wonder if that money should be used, because it towards some kind of compensation for these people who have to have, you know, every year, they're getting more and more requirements they have to have, and keeping our vehicles safe and manageable. That's the biggest question I have. You know, I, I'm glad that people are looking at cutting, but at the same token, when we have other departments that look at, you know, they cut, but then they, they're reimbursing their people. And while I didn't support that, that's what we do now, so I just wondered if that was something we should look at for those people who are keeping all of our liability issues, especially with our fleet on the road. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor Johnson.
Chairman Watson, I have a question.
Yes, Supervisor Bishop.
How would this affect the sheriff's office and how, how he runs his department with so many vehicles that are required? Is this going to benefit the sheriff's office, as far as his budget goes?
Supervisor Watson and Supervisor Bishop, excellent question. Yes, it will provide the savings to the sheriff's office. The sheriff operates the majority of the assigned vehicles, approximately 107 of the 216, well, about approximately half. And the sheriff, because the sheriff's office roads the most mileage, our assigned vehicles of 216 accumulates about 3 million miles annually, and the sheriff is responsible for about 2 million miles of that. It's my estimation that this may realize a savings in the final eight months of, just a little over $110,000. And I do want to just make a quick point, and acknowledgement of Supervisor Johnson's comments as well. Extremely well-taken, and I stand first and foremost behind my staff of extremely talented auto mechanics in being, they're, they're the best at what they do. They're the best in Public Works, and, and I'm proud of being associated with them. And staff puts forward this proposal with the caveat that it's obviously the direction of the board to align our expenses as necessary with the particular revenue proposals.
Okay.
Supervisor Angus?
I see the sheriff's in the audience. I want to make sure that he is fully aware of, and why wouldn't this have been done during the budget process? Why now?
Supervisor Angus, this was identified as a, an expense surplus, really, as we worked our way through the fiscal year 18. I do represent that this particular proposal need be reconsidered in the context of the rates with the FY19 budget planning. But these rates of $75 fixed and 39 cents a mile have been carried forward now for quite a few years in a row, and simply weren't part of our focus with regard to the budget planning process previously.
Sheriff Schuster? Just want to make sure that, since you are the, the biggest, be the biggest change will be in your department.
Supervisor Angus, I did meet with Mr. Lutowski on this issue. This has been a concern, honestly, since I took office, in looking at our fuel costs. The concern I had was based on the mileage fee, and this is something that's kind of been in the planning for a while, and I was appreciative of Mr. Lutowski coming forward with this type of solution. I had offered up some additional solutions to try and reduce the mileage rate, because in, in effect, the current budget that we are going, or that we're working under by June of next year would be depleted, based on the fact that we had less deputies on patrol during the last fiscal year, and the numbers calculated to come up with this year's fueling costs were based on the miles driven in that prior fiscal year. So I anticipate, I anticipated an additional 500,000 miles, which would put us over. So we're good with this plan. It's something that I would like to look at again next year, because, again, it's been a, a grave concern of mine, the amount of money that we're, we're paying for fuel. And so I just look at this as a stopgap for this year, but I'd like to readdress it next year as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions at the chair? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to speak to Mr. Lutowski for just a moment, please. Mr. Lutowski, about a year ago, we had about 80 members of the Road Department in, in requesting a raise, as they hadn't had raises for a number of years, and that was followed through by addressing that. My concern here is, this is basically the, the mechanics that work on our vehicles. Is there a split between the sheriff vehicles, which I would call, you know, like regular vehicles, and then there's the heavy-duty equipment for the Road Department? Is there a delineation of, of that department? Is there? Could you explain that a little bit for me? Because I'm concerned about, we've, we've addressed the, the income levels of those in the Road Department, but we have not addressed the people in the maintenance and the...
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
That's, I appreciate your, your concern. What the board has approved is the hot jobs that we utilize for our Road Department personnel. That is based on us identifying areas where we cannot provide adequate service due to not being able to retain or, or hire qualified employees. Director Steve Lutowski has previously provided a proposal to take a look at our mechanics, and supports a proposal to me to look at our mechanics. At that time, when it was presented to me, I didn't believe it qualified for the hot jobs or met that hot jobs criteria. I've been reapproached regarding that particular issue. We do this administratively, not through the supervisors. We bring proposals to the supervisors, and I appreciate your all's support. Steve Lutowski and I will be meeting with members of the, that side, both sides of the shop tomorrow, and to readdress the hot jobs issue, and to look at new information that they're going to be providing, to see if we can support a proposal to the board of supervisors regarding those positions.
Thank you, Mr. Hendrix. That clarifies somewhat my concerns. Basically, my concern is, we took care of the, the Flowing the Road Department, and we weren't addressing the mechanics. But I understand now that you're going to be addressing that tomorrow.
That is correct, Chairman Watson.
Okay. So might it make sense for us to hold off on this decision, based on what decision you might make tomorrow?
No, no, sir. We'd like to move forward with this proposal. Regardless, we believe the funding will be available if we decide to move forward with the hot jobs position for both motor vehicle mechanics and the heavy equipment mechanics.
Okay, great. Answers my question. Thank you. Supervisor Johnson?
I'm not buying that. No, I think it's the middle, middle of the, middle of the budget time, and I wouldn't be, wouldn't be changing it at this point. You bring up some good points about the mechanics, and, and I would just soon see it put on hold until we make a decision with the mechanics, because they're kind of like IT, they do keep everybody up and running.
Is that a form of motion?
Sure, I'd make a motion to, just to table this, or just to take no action on it. It could be brought back when, when they decide on what they want to do. So just to make a motion, just no action to be taken.
No action.
Okay. So we don't need a second if no action?
I wouldn't need, wouldn't need a second. We just take no action.
Right.
They can bring it back.
So, okay.
Fine with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. Item number 12, no action. Be readdressing that a later day. Move on to public hearings. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, the adoption of Board Supervisor's Resolution 2017-147, to accept the Benegas Ranch Road from the South Line, Section 11, to the South Line of Section 13, approximately 1.25 miles, and the Benegas crossing from Benegas Ranch Road to State Route 93, approximately 0.43 miles, until abandoned or vacated in accordance with the purpose of accepting the roadway into Mojave County Road Maintenance Program for regular maintenance, only to the degree of improvement as a gravel roadway. Anyone wishing to speak to item number 26? There being none, I'll close the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, make a motion to approve items 26.
We have a motion for the approval of 26.
Second.
And a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Item number 27. I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, the adoption of Board Supervisor's Resolution 2017-153, establishing an approximately 1.44-mile-long section of Skipper Road from White Hills Road to Spear Boulevard, Spear Boulevard from Skipper Road to Senator Boulevard, Senator Boulevard to, from Spear Boulevard to Indian Peak Drive, located in the White Hill areas, as a county highway. Transportation Commission recommended to accept this petition. I have one person signed up to speak to that item, Jerry Ricardo. Richards, I'm sorry, Jerry Richards.
The section of, that we're talking about, Skipper, Spear, and Senator, go smack dab through the center of our association, and please forgive me. My name is Jerry Richards. I am the president of the Board of Directors for the, for this association.
And your address, sir?
Pardon?
And your address?
Is 9184 West Hunga Drive, White Hills, Arizona, 86445.
Okay.
Okay. So the section that we're talking about is, in fact, our, our association, and these roads go smack dab through the middle. And what we have is a lot of traffic, as things more and more to the north of us are being permitted, and, and we have two gravel quarries, and we have a ton of gravel trucks going in and out of our association, quite often at very high rates of speed, because there is no patrolling of this road. It's a dirt road. So we get nobody up there... So we get nobody up there, the, the truckers, they don't cover their loads, they just race through there, they, at, it seems to begin at about three AM and it's all day long and the dust is tremendous and the traffic conditions are horrendous. We have seen, I personally have witnessed a truck coming down the road through the center of our association, being passed by another truck at a, at a higher rate of speed. These things are not safe and we believe that by making this a public highway, which it should be, will allow us to put up signs, stop signs, speed limits and various things that will help the safety of our community. And I, I can go on for hours actually talking about the needs and why we need them. I'm just going to leave it at both the Traffic Safety Committee and Road Works have endorsed this, recommend this, so we are asking that you vote for the, the proposal of making Spear, Skipper and Senator a, a county highway and that we go just a step further by paving it, hopefully with the, with the shavings that we have down at the intersection of White Hills Road and Highway ninety-three. Thank you. Is there any questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Is your association thought about doing an improvement district and paving your roads?
We've considered that, but we're not a wealthy association. Most of the people there are retired on fixed incomes and things like that, so what you're talking about is essentially doubling their property taxes. I don't know that I'd have the support for that, but whatever that can be done, we've been working on this for the last fifteen years and we've tried everything and we've been promised a lot of things that just didn't come to fruition, so this was kind of our last hope. But again, we have the support and recommendations from County Works and also from the Traffic Safety Committee and so we're thinking that as a county highway that will get things done that will help the safety of the community and, and the dust issues as well. We have no services out there. We are out in the middle of nowhere. We, we have no police department is, comes from Kingman. We're not patrolled. We have no fire services out there. We have no county services to take care of our community and the only thing that we're asking for is that the road going just through our community, through our association, be taken care of and addressed in a way to make it safer for our citizens in that area.
But on the other hand, everybody chose to live out there, but now you come to the county to pave your road.
This, this community was plotted in nineteen sixty-two, long before there was any quarries or anything else going on, so we were by far there first and in nineteen ninety-four, the quarries come in. So, and with those truckers comes just, I can't tell you how much dust goes through there, but I think I heard it once said that one truck is equivalent to eighteen cars. We've just recently granted business licenses to communities beyond that and I'll also like to note that there are no other roads going north of our community that is maintained other than ours. So you have a lot of sections beyond ours to the north that is not been given proper access to, that everybody that applies for permits have to go through our community. And as I said in the last meeting that we had about this is, you know, you have a glass of water that's full, you can't put in one more drop because what we hear is, well, it's just a couple of trucks a day or a couple of more cars a day, but we're already extended. We're already have the dust, I mean, you should see my house on a daily basis. My wife asked me to help dust, keep the place clean. There's that much dust in the air. So we all knew that there was dust in the air in there. We'd lived on dirt roads. We know that, but not this, not to this extreme and that's why I believe we're being supported by Public Works and the Traffic Safety Committee.
I have a question.
Supervisor Bishop?
Mr. Richards, I've been in meetings, many meetings with you and the community and at the last meeting, we, we spoke with the management of Kalamazoo, the dirt pit out there that you referenced and at that time, they were willing and suggested that they could provide some materials if, if we wanted to go forward in, in either hard surface or improve the roads in, in any manner. Is, is that offer still on the table?
That is my understanding. We have actually developed a better relationship with Paul from Kalamazoo and he has actually offered us dirt and things for, for the rain because keep in mind that we are at the side of a hill, so it's a constant erosion and he's provided us already with dirt. He has mentioned that he would be open to the idea of supplying various materials to help accomplish exactly what we're talking about doing here. We have just purchased a road grader ourselves. We're in the middle of purchasing a water truck or looking to purchase a water truck and we are all willing to help alleviate the cost from, to the county by adding these things to the, to the project so the county would use as little resources as possible. It's not a long stretch of, of road, but I can't speak for Kalamazoo or Vista, but I, I can say that Kalamazoo has expressed an interest in helping, it's their trucks. The trucks are coming to their place, so certainly they have an interest here.
That's true and it, it sounds like several roads, the way it's described, but actually it's just a meandering of, of a single stretch of roadway.
That is correct.
That's not very long and I think the thing that has changed since I met with, with your organization and suggested forming an improvement district like Supervisor Johnson questioned you about, is the fact that we now, the county has been given some millings from the Highway ninety-three ADOT road project and they're being stored on, on a property that's close to this area and it only makes sense that it's the only feasible area that we could utilize these millings at. And, and I, I wanted to further state that this, this stretch of roadway is being used by these large gravel trucks and it's kind of the county's oversight by letting this pit come into this area and drive right through a residential area, through, through the heart of this residential area, causing significant dust and it's been the subject of many, many ADEQ complaints and, and...
That is correct.
Hundreds of phone calls to my office. I can, I can assure you of that. This road also leads to a stretch, to Equestrian Estates, which is another subdivision just to the north and, and east, I believe of...
I think it's a little bit northwest.
Northwest.
And then they also have opened up a section to the, to the east, the forty acres.
Okay, well, my, my point was being this Equestrian Estates, I don't know how it happened, but we maintain the gravel roads for that section and our ruling says that we can maintain a road if it's connected to another county road and this, this is isolated and I don't know how that happened, but maybe Mr. Lautowski can, can explain that when he comes up and talks to us, but this road, should we decide to go forward with it, corrects a mistake that, that was made years ago based on our policies, so...
Well, I'd also like to point out that this company that had taken over the Equestrian Estates, as well as the forty acres that they've broken up, they hold actually sales events out there and, which bring in a lot of people and they have indicated to me their intentions to buy more properties out there and make more and more sales. So that is increasing, that is putting quite a, a load on this road that is already overloaded and I don't know, at some point, we've got, we've got more traffic at times than down at Highway ninety-three, so I don't know, I, I think that it would be a good idea to jump, get a jump on things and take care of this before this really blows out of proportion. I understand we do need businesses and things going on in this county, but we need to prepare the infrastructure for it.
Okay, well, you do have my support on this road. Originally, I, I was wanting you to do an improvement district, but with the millings being donated and with the new information about this other isolated subdivision that we do maintain the roads on and it's an opportunity for us today to, to fix a number of problems and, and so I'd like to hear from Mr. Lautowski because I believe the cost of this is going to be very minimal too, based on, on...
We're going to contribute as much as we can.
Right. Thank you very much, Mr. Richards.
I can, Mr. Richards. Did you want to? I missed Lautowski.
Mr. Lautowski, it's my understanding that this road, the placings of the milling is, is going to be approximately two-hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Bishop, staff has offered that estimate on the premise of a previous soil stabilization, hard surfacing projects that were carried out by contractors. That just speaks to the actual stabilization and hard surfacing work and not the level of maintenance and preparing the roadway to accept such a project.
Okay. And can you confirm that we do have the millings in our possession that we received from ADOT?
Supervisor Bishop, I can confirm that, yes, they are currently being staged on the...
And that's enough to pave this mile and a half?
Property that is just, just off of White Hills Road near US ninety-three.
Okay, and that, it's my, also my understanding that the main expense of hard surfacing a road is, is the millings and the hauling from point A to, to where the road's being improved. Is that correct?
Supervisor Bishop, well, the millings would represent a significant material component of a stabilization chip seal, however, as it relates to contract labor, for example, the level of labor costs as well as the oil costs involved in applying the soil stabilization and chip seal, the chips as well for the chip seal, those are significant components as well. So the millings, while a, definitely a benefit, would not account for say a majority of the cost, but at least a percentage of the cost.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lautowski. At this point, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Supervisor Watson, I'd like to move that we adopt Resolution twenty seventeen one five-three and establish this one point four-four mile-long section of Skipper Boulevard from White Hills Road to Spear, Spear Boulevard from Skipper Boulevard to Senator and Senator Boulevard from Spear Boulevard to Indian Peak Drive located in the White Hills area as county highways. Second that.
We have a motion and a second for the approval of item twenty-seven. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number twenty-eight, I'll open the public hearing for the discussion, possible action, sending as the Board of Directors of the Golden Valley Improvement District to consider and approve Amendment number seventeen dash one to Golden Valley Improvement District, number one, Policy and Procedures Memorandum number nine oh dash one to revise Section three point two, point A, establish increased water system rates or levy, or tax levy on the district parcels, to revise Section two point three, establishing increased future development fee, to revise Section two point six on the sale of unassigned service connections, and also to establish the new Section two point seven on service connections, and to establish new Section three point two, point J, on water leak adjustments to become effective January first, two thousand and eighteen. I have a number of people that have signed up to request to speak to this item.
Good morning. I'm Ted Martin. I own property and live at forty-twenty North Guthrie in Golden Valley and I am a user on this system, which I just want to remind you that none of the five of you are, so you're governing my system that I have ownership in. So I am essentially against any increase at this time as we sit currently and the reason why I am a little bit frustrated is the system's been in place for close to twenty years and the best thing that we can do for a system like this is to get more users on it and this system has essentially sat basically with no growth over that timeframe. If you look at the statistics, we're only looking at about a quarter of the users that are in the taxing district that are actually on the system and if we wanted to have efficiencies in the system, we would gain efficiencies by getting more users and if we had more users, we'd be able to do some of the things that we would want to do to make improvements and to have the long-term issue of, of having reserves and having money set aside to be able to do improvements on the system. So for twenty years, we've sat stagnant and now you're coming to us for an increase in, in rates and you're doing this in an area that is pretty much on a fixed income. So to me, if you want to do something, get more users on the system. Do whatever you can to get more users on the system that are, that starts bringing in the revenue. You already put the big thing in place by having the infrastructure in place and you're pumping water already. Get more users on there so you, the people are paying for the system. So in the long term, if it's up to me, I would like to see something done to, to make the improvements to get more users. You have people in the taxing body that don't even have the infrastructure up to their door or by their street and you've seen an example about that today. You've heard two situations where people have paid money for, to be on the system and the system isn't to their door. Well, let's get it to their door and let's get them on the system and let's generate the revenue before you ask us for more revenue. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
Where, where does all that money come from to do all these additions and stuff if you don't increase the rates?
Well, you've had twenty years of collecting rates. If you cannot plan in the twenty years and, and the economy of scale was a lot better when you started, so why weren't, why didn't you start back then putting pennies aside to put towards future development and future growth in the system? You didn't. Now, all of a sudden, you've let it stagnant. Now you want us to do it now.
I, I don't believe the county's let it stagnant. If you're, if your people don't buy into the system, the system was put in place for the people in that district out there and it was prorated how to do it and the money that came in went for putting new wells in, putting in the, the infrastructure needs that are out there because we can't overcharge for, for the services.
But, but that's what I'm saying. You have people that are in the taxing body that don't even have the infrastructure to their, to their door or to their road. Put it in, get more users in there. That's what you should have been doing over the last twenty years.
We don't have the money to do that, so, so I don't understand how you think we're going to be able to do that.
Hey, if you don't want the responsibility of governing the system, I'd be more than happy to take that over for you. So if you want to do it and, and if you want to do something now, and I'm speaking for myself, if you want to do something now, I'd be more in favor of increasing the rates explicitly for doing the structure improvements to the infrastructure to get as many people in the taxing body the service that they've been paying for and then after a certain time, that sunsets. When we get everybody on there, when we're generating revenue like we should out of the users type of, of how much money per gallon, then we sunset back to what the users' rates are and I bet you if we did, we'd have enough money to adequately provide for what we want to do in the future.
Mr. Esplin, is, is it possible that this district can be given, taken out of the county's hands?
Well, out of the Board of Supervisors' hands, yes. There's two different procedures that can be done. The Board of Supervisors by vote can give it over to a, a domestic water district where they would have their own board or alternatively, the members of the district can petition to do so and I believe it's fifty-one percent of the... to do so, and I believe it's 51% of the landowners would have to petition for that.
There's your answer right there, sir. You bring that petition forward, and you got one vote to get your water district back to your hands.
I have a question.
Chairman Watson?
So this vote, the board could vote to give this district to a governing board or however, and what would be that process? Not just a petition. It's either/or, petition or vote of the Board of Supervisors. Is it just a simple majority? Is it supermajority? Is it unanimous?
No, it's a majority.
It's just a majority?
But I think they have to have that 51% so that they want it.
They want it. So their first deal is to go and get the 51% of people in that district, come to us, and then we can vote on it.
I just slightly disagree. You can do either one. It doesn't have to be 51%. The Board of Supervisors, the Board could elect to say, we're going to go forward and create a domestic water district and have their own board, or it could be 51%.
And how, so how would we, would we just put it on the agenda?
I'd have to look into it more, but I think generally speaking, yes. It would be brought forward to the agenda. The Board would then make a decision whether to make, give it over to a domestic water board, and then they would have their own procedure. The Board would pick the first directors, and then after a certain period of time, the next election period would come, then they would do their own vote and vote for their own directors.
Supervisor Bishop, since this is in your district, have you gotten the pulse of what the people out there want?
The vocal members of the community want to take over their own district and run it themselves, and what we haven't heard from is the majority of the people in the district, what they want. So I would like to hear from everybody in the district, not just the ones that typically come to the meetings and are vocal on social media. Because if we turn this over to a water improvement district, which I am not opposed to, believe me, and they're not successful, and they don't have the expertise to run this complicated system, does the county then have to pick it up and salvage what's left and go forward again with it? So I need those questions answered as well. But it's not a district that we're making money on for the general fund. I mean, we're just trying to provide water to the residents.
I'd be speculating, but I imagine that if it was handed over to a domestic water improvement district, and if the district were to fail, it'd be a similar situation to what we had with the Lake Mojave Rancho situation, where the county would likely want to step in to try to assist the people, and I think it'd be something similar to that.
I can share with you that I am a water user for the chloride water domestic improvement district, and I have a little tiny house in chloride, and we use water there maybe once a month when we go out and spend the day, and my water bill is $48.44 a month. So when we became a domestic water improvement district, and chloride expenses, of course, increased, and a lot of improvements were made. I think the improvement district did a fabulous job of running it, and I think they still do, and that's why I pay my water bill. But it's not going to be any cheaper with a domestic water improvement district ran by private citizens as opposed to this board.
Chairman, just to, Supervisor Angus, the reason I was saying the 51% is so that we know that there's 51% of the people that want to take it over instead of us just giving it up.
Can't hear you.
Pardon?
Can't hear you. Speak into the mic.
Well, maybe you'll move a little closer than I'm speaking into the mic. But 51%, if they wanted to take it over, then I have no problem doing it. I mean, I have no problem just letting it go, but the-
You still can't hear you out here.
Why don't you move down to the front, lady?
Okay.
But the 51% Supervisor Bishop brings up is the fact that the costs are going to be the cost, no matter what, no matter who runs it. Everybody thinks they can run it cheaper than the county can, but it's not going to work. I guess we kind of got off far afield on that.
Thank you. Our next person signed up to speak to item number 28 is Wayne Holland.
Hello again. Wayne Holland, 4825 North Mormon Flat Road, Golden Valley. I'm not necessarily opposed to a water increase, but 30%, a little excessive, I think, for one time. Again, we've had a long time that we could have been increasing it slowly. Right now, I've seen on the backup thing, we had the 24% CPI increase for water and sanitation, part of our economy. It doesn't really matter how much that increased because the paychecks were going up 1% to 2%, if that. So however much it went up, when you go to spend it, you didn't get that increase. And that's what you got to spend. You can't spend somebody else's increase. And I'm not opposed to a private, the water company being done by a private board. I don't have a problem with that. One thing I haven't seen since we've been out here is normally, if you're on a water system, you get an annual report of the quality of the water and what the laboratory results of that were. I've been out here three years, I have yet to see anything like that. I think the reason why people want to have their own board is that they assume they could, it's their system, and they should be able to have, to run it. Of course, that always depends on the quality of the people that you got running it, but nevertheless, that's why they would want to have control of it. It's their water system. We got Golden Valley Water System, you got to come to Kingman. That's where the office is. To me, that's kind of ridiculous. We should be able to go to Golden Valley and pay your water bill and do your business out there. So a smaller increase is fine, and I don't necessarily agree with their proposal to increase, want to increase the property tax, but with the first proposal of increasing it somewhat for a smaller amount would be acceptable to me. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Holland, are you aware that Valley Pioneer just raised their rates?
I've seen that.
And there doesn't seem to be a lot of public outcry in regards to that, so I just wanted to point that out. And also, I'm assuming that you're volunteering to be on this first board if we decide to go that route, based on your comments?
If I had to.
Thank you.
I would rather not, but I'd rather pick up trash, but I would.
I agree. But water rates are going up at just about any water company you look at. It's going up.
The going up is not the big problem. It's the, we didn't need a reason to have an increase before, but now, 10 years later or something, we decide, oh, we need a 50% raise.
Plus your argument about wanting to pay your bill in Golden Valley, don't you come into Kingman to do your banking and do other bills?
I try not to come to Kingman for nothing.
I don't understand that analogy. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I try not to come to Kingman for anything. My car don't even like coming this direction, but-
Understand.
I would rather do things that we can in our community, but-
Thank you, Mr. Holland.
It's kind of weird.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Watson, I just have a quick question that crossed my mind. Is there any precedent, two things? A, to have a member, maybe an elected, from that district to sit with this, you know, because we act as the Board of Directors for the water district? And/or can there be an advisory committee like we have, planning and zoning? Can they vote for, have their own advisory that could come to us and speak for the district?
I don't see any problem with an advisory committee. As far as having someone else sit up here, I don't think that would be permissible. The statutes in the improvement districts talk about, you know, whether it's an elected body or if it's the Board of Supervisors that do it, and so I would shy away from that, but the advisory committee is something I think that this board could do, create.
Could do, yes.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Kathleen Michler?
Kathleen Michler, 5485 North Laguna Road. I'm not opposed to a rate increase. Valley Pioneer did get a water increase that was 22%, but mine's going up 85, I think, I'm not opposed to having our own board for Golden Valley, but there's a few things that need to be worked out. For one, all the equipment that was bought 50/50 with the I-40 project, trucks, tractors, backhoes, because they used 50% of Golden Valley Improvement District's money to buy that equipment. Also, the $150,000 they used to build the new Public Works building. That would all have to be worked out. I just, I'm not opposed to a rate increase. I could see, I could see 15% to 20%, not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Robinson?
All my talking points changed before I got up here. Steve Robinson, address already stated. Let me quote Section 2.3 of the Policy and Procedure Memorandum, last updated in 2011. As lands within the district develop, the existing system may not be adequate to supply the needed water for those developments. The district will look to the developer to pay the cost of increasing the capacity. Depending on the size, the cost may be that of drilling a new well, constructing a new storage tank, laying new water lines, or all of the above. It's the responsibility of developers to increase the capacity. Currently, the capacity is 400 million gallons a year for the water system, is what they can pump if they pump at full volume. We use about 104 million, according to the 2016 water report for the district. That means that we're already in excess of capacity. Third, we have two existing wells, one of which has problems with particulate matter, the other one has problems with arsenic. We were treating one of the two pumping wells for arsenic so we could treat a third well. There is no need to expand the system. Regarding Valley Pioneer, they lost a $1 million customer in the mine. That's what generated the need for this of 24% increase, is all they were granted by Arizona Corporations Commission. It was their first rate increase in 16 years. We just had one in 2008 for the Golden Valley or the water district. It takes 50% of the owners, 50% of the property owners, in other words, if over 50% of the property owners of the property, those that own over 19,000 acres, if they own over 9,900 acres, then they make that decision, or the Board can make that decision to convert it. I've identified probably more than a dozen people within the district, property owners and otherwise. I just added Ted Martin to that list of people that would be more than willing to step up and run the district. The problem is not with that, it's with the attitude that came from the Golden Valley Area Plan that said, we have no water out there. Because of that, there's been a serious restriction of development. Another issue, there's at least triple the water, according to the USGS report of 2013. There's 28.5 million acre feet, which is triple ADWR's estimate. In 2006, this board said, oops, we're not going to sell allocations to developers just to people splitting up their lots. Well, they don't create the infrastructure necessary. I'm going to run out of time, unfortunately, but there's a lot room for many, many more allocations that could be approached. If we just took one look at that we're only using 160 gallons per customer instead of 200 gallons per customer-
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
We add 1,600 allocations to the Board. Thank you. Any questions?
Leon Hogland-Smith, 3981 South Centennial, Golden Valley. First, I wish to thank Mr. Lakowski for a well-facilitated meeting at the Golden Valley Fire Station Training Center. He allowed all participants to speak. He was extremely respectful, and he did a very excellent job of facilitation, given many people were upset by not just a 30% increase, but looking at a 100% increase in their water rates. Second, your proposal doesn't show any projected revenue. And when you write a proposal, you're supposed to, normal, common sense, give us a projection of that, what that revenue is going to deliver. Just a thought. Thirdly, the proposal in front of you is not the one that was advertised. It's been changed. Now, I don't understand Arizona law. I came from Indiana. I was an elected official. I signed my John Henry to legal notices. Our attorney told us, once you publish it, once you advertise it, you can't change it. You vote on that proposal. If you make changes to that proposal, it goes through the process again, 30 days, publication in newspapers. You know the drill. What has been changed is you reduced some, a couple rates, you included an interim rate that wasn't on the original proposal. You know, since this hearing is a legal notice, at least that's what I thought it was, I believe the Board should vote on the legal notice it published, not the one that's been on the addendum. You know, if you want to make changes, go, but then go through the process again. I guess this all boils down to one question. Why have a legal notice if you're going to change it after the fact? Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Baker?
I live at 2194 South Estrella. I've been out there for a whole lot of years, and I remember back in the beginning when they said they wanted to put water into Golden Valley. Okay, we all signed a petition to pay for that water line to be installed. We paid for 10 years. And what I can't understand is, I've got good water service. I can't understand how so many water haulers can haul water to people out there in Golden Valley that refuse to pay the absorbent fees that the water company wants. I paid $454 for my meter. How in the world can they say now that it's going to be over $5,000 to put in a meter? I've been around a long time. It's the first time I've been in here to visit the Board, and it's only because I feel that the requested increase is ridiculous. I'm just one individual, and I know I don't amount to an awful lot as far as you people are concerned, but I do vote for you. So they better stop and think, if you want to be voted back in, you better listen to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Everyone counts, sir. Clayton Richardson?
My name's Clayton Richardson. I live in 7602 West Vandergriff Drive in Golden Valley. I live on a non-service road. I am opposed to the increase, other than a small increase, which may be needed at this time. But the amount of increase is just not comparable to the amount of people that live out there and the amount of income that people bring in. As we know, there's a lot of people that are on fixed incomes out there, and I think they need to be looked at as people that are willing to pay some, but not drive them out of their homes. them out of their homes. I have a suggestion of how to create more revenue out in that area. But first, it's got to come out of your pocket. But then it will get back to you by those who have the water at the property. Charging them for water lines to go in and meters is absolutely inappropriate to getting them to want to be on the water system to their homes. I suggest that what you do is you put the meters in and the water lines and charge them extra money for that over a period of years, so that you can get the revenue that's coming in, that's needed, to keep the water company going and keep it very, very profitable. I don't see anything wrong with that, because these people are paying more money to have their water hauled to their home than they would pay to have the water line in at their home and have maybe $20 or $25 extra on their water bill to pay for those lines running in. You'd have the community booming to be able to do that. I have a piece of property that is on a road that says, when I come in here to find out how I can get water, telling me that there's no water line, line, line running onto that land, yet there's a spigot sticking up out of the ground, and they're telling me that there's no water line there. And I said, "There is." So how much is it going to cost me to have the water run in there? Well, the water meter goes up every month, and if I want to put a water line in there, they've told me that what I need to do is I need to do a petition for everybody on the road to make sure that they approve putting a water line in. Who's going to sign the petition when their taxes are going to go up?
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
Thank you. Jennifer Espinoz? That was Clayton Richardson, right? The one before?
Yeah. Clayton Richardson. Jennifer Jones Espinoz, candidate for the Arizona House of Representatives, 3211 East Snavely Avenue in Kingman. And in case anyone's curious, that is in Supervisor Bishop's district, not Supervisor Watson's. As a matter of fact, all the properties my husband and I own are in Supervisor Bishop's district. I own two properties in GVID, so I got a horse in this race. You know, it's a, Mark Twain is often quoted as saying that whiskey's for drinking and water's for fighting. Well, having property in this district gives me unique perspective. It would be very difficult to contact all the property owners in this district. There's a lot of vacant lots. There's a lot of unoccupied properties. I think the guy on the corner up the road from my property is in prison. Might be hard to track him down, get him to sign a petition. However, I'm also on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the Golden Paradise Landowners, and the discussion of our last meeting was specifically about this rate increase. The majority of people in attendance all wanted to know how the locals could take back control of it. One of the proposals is about smart meters, funding smart meters. I am unilaterally always opposed to smart meters for a variety of reasons that I don't have the time to explain here. The problem with this, with the original proposal, and again, it brings up the question about whether the proposal has changed, but it rewarded high-volume users while punishing low-volume users. That's a bad business plan. As someone who's not hooked up to water on my two properties, I can't see why I would ever even want to do it if it costs me $5,000 to do it. I can go to waterseer.org and get a thing that stinks, sticks in the ground that condenses six or 10 gallons a day, and really, having lived off the grid, I know how much I would use, and that would pretty well cover it, never have to hook up at all. But the problem with this proposal is there was no feasibility study. Growth is stagnant. Revenues are statistically down over a period of years. There is absolutely no projected revenue for this to show what it intends to bring in and how it's going to pay for the needs of the people. I don't know anyone that was in favor of the proposal with the smart meters, and we don't really even know the feasibility of drilling another well or a lot of the things that come into this. But here's the bottom line. If the, if the, this Board, none of whom live in the district like I own property there, if this Board chooses to raise the rates, I have no problem organizing a referendum. Moreover, if the county were to refuse to accept the signatures on a referendum, believing that somehow it was not an executive action, subject to referendum, as a property owner in this district, I have standing to take it to court to force the county to put it to a ballot. And I have litigated all the way up to the federal Knight Circuit Court of Appeals, so I am perfectly capable of tying you up for three or four years.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoz, for your comment. Mr. Glenn Powell? I apologize. I thought it was Glenn.
It is Gwendolyn, but I don't.
Gwendolyn, thank you very much. I apologize.
Thank you. Good morning, and my name is Gwen Powell. I live at 1435 Southeast Lane in Golden Valley, and I wanted to address the issue of adequate water supply in Golden Valley based on some research. In 2008, the Arizona Department of Water Resources issued a preliminary report to be replaced by the United States Geological Survey, which is due out soon. For the Sacramento water aquifer, part of which is listed, the volume of water for Golden Valley's Improvement District is having 175,600 feet, acre feet of water. That's 35 percent more than the area where the Valley Pioneer Water Company draws water, which is just east of the Golden Valley Improvement District. The whole aquifer was estimated at nine and a half million acre feet in storage. Valley Pioneers pumped over 5,500 acre feet for years last decade, or eight times their designated capacity. Water level only dropped slightly, but the Valley, sorry, the Valley Pioneer Water Company lost their designation since they pumped so much. They're still operating with no issues from the Arizona Department of Water Resources. In 2013, the United States Geological Survey issued their report for the Mojave County aquifers, including the Golden Valley area. They used much of the information and data gathered by the Arizona Department of Water Resources and stated that the aquifer was totally estimated, water available was 28.4 million acre feet. That is triple the Arizona Department of Water Resources estimate. Golden Valley Improvement District was finally issued their actual designation of adequate water supply, since stated that the actual feet, acre feet is available is 2,350 acre feet per year. The designation included three sections of land near the Griffith Energy Plant outside the district, approximately eight to 10 miles south of Golden Valley Improvement District. The US Geological Survey report states there's triple the water, so the designation from the Arizona Department of Water Resources will allow approximately 10,500 allocations. That's over 4,700 available for sale, not 422, which is an artificial limit. It does not matter where the wells are drilled in Golden Valley, since they have the right to withdraw 2,350 acre feet. Okay, I'll finish, but I would like to say that I was made to buy a allocation for $1,173.75 in 2007. I am on water haul, because I'm unable to get a water meter, even though I'm directly across the street from the line, right off of Bolson. And there's really something wrong with the situation that's going on and has been going on. I'm a newcomer. I've only been here 10 years, but something needs to be done.
Thank you. I'd recommend that you speak with Supervisor Bishop. Thank you. Jim McNabb?
I'm Jim McNabb. I live at 1193 South Dewey Road in Golden Valley. The reason I want to speak to you gentlemen today is, ladies and gentlemen, that the rate increase, I believe is excessive. I, I've been out here 20 years on my property, and I haul water. But the Board needs to take in consideration that people that haul water not only have the expense of the water itself, but they have the expense of the vehicles they use to haul it. You know, you have tires wear, gasoline, all that stuff. So the water bill isn't just the water bill. You know, you have to consider all that. And what they're talking about, all the increase of, for a new well, that really isn't necessary at this time, and they, they've always put bonds on or, or, you know, put an assessment on your property, which I've paid all those all through these years. I've owned my property since 88, and when the Board was formed or the Improvement District was formed. I don't have any problem with an increase, but I think the increase is excessive, especially for water haulers. I mean, they're going to, I look like it's 60, 70 percent. I didn't figure it out, but it seemed like quite a bit is a increase. We don't get the benefit of, of the lines and all that stuff that are in front of the houses that are, that are getting water delivered. You know, that's what most of this increase is going to cover, is for maintenance and stuff. There is no maintenance for our properties. You know, we have to haul the water ourselves. We tried to get it put in, couldn't get signatures, and when they finally get signatures, they abandoned the project because nobody wanted to pay the $14,000 per lot to, to have the water put in there. I would have paid it, but I'm not, I'm not 51 percent, so, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that completes those that were signed up to speak to item number 28. At this time, I'll close the public hearing for 28 and make a recommendation that possibly we table this for 60 days, await to see if the community wants to put together a Board.
That's an excellent idea.
Mr. Chairman, a petition?
Pardon me?
You mean a petition if they want to gather a petition?
I haven't made a motion. I was just a recommendation.
Is 60 days enough, you think? Maybe 90 days?
Be 90 days.
90 days? Okay.
I'll make a motion. We table it for 90 days?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Did you have comments?
No, I just want to make sure that was, didn't interfere with the, with the projects we had going, but 90 days is fine.
Okay. Mr. Hendricks, do you have any?
No, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I think, for 90 days. Any further discussion?
I look forward to seeing the petition.
There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Onto item number 29. And before I get into 29, I just wanted to say good luck, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sure you can put together a program that would be sufficient for everyone, and thank you for your attendance today. Item number 29, Buster Johnson, Mojave County Supervisor, District 3. Discuss and possible action on the process of rewarding folks for the reward established by the Board on March 2, 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason I brought this to the Board, I thought it should have been handled outside of the Board. We've had many meetings on it. The Chairman has graciously donated $500 for a reward. We had a citizen that came forward and made a report. The person was prosecuted by the County Attorney's Office. The County Attorney's Office and, and law enforcement said that it was because of this man's being a good citizen, but yet he's never received his money.
And got paid.
No, so I brought it to the Board so that we could make a decision that the man either should be paid or he shouldn't be paid. There's, there's tons of confusion, and this Board never voted that it would go to a silent witness or anything else. It just said the county would give a, give a reward, and I believe we have the money in there, and I think it's the honorable thing to do, and it should have been done way ahead of time.
Well, let's do the honorable thing.
Sure. I have a question. I received a text message from Todd Davidson in the ERACE program, and he said that ERACE never investigated this case, that it was investigated by someone else, so I need some clarity on that.
That is, that is true. I don't believe ERACE investigated it. It was turned into the Sheriff's Department. I don't think we ever, well, never envisioned the idea that you had to tell Supervisor Watson, but not Supervisor Angus, you know, to get your money. I don't know that ERACE did it, but still, I think the, the person did turn the people in. We did prosecute them. I think we owe them money.
Yep.
I mean, if we want to change it later and say it has to be gone through ERACE, but I think the way it was set up this time was that the man should get his money.
If he got a conviction, I believe we owe them.
Mr. Chairman, let's clarify that we did get a conviction on that, because I, this is an extremely confusing issue. It's so confusing that originally ERACE was utilizing, like Supervisor Johnson said, at least leaning, intending to utilize the services Silent Witness, and that was never the intent of the Board. So I spoke with Steve Lutowski, who clarified that with ERACE, that if we did have somebody participate and, and in letting us know about an individual who was, who was dumping, and we, it resulted in a conviction, that they were authorized through the Board of Supervisors to pay that directly without going through anybody else. However, this is a, I'm even confused on this particular issue after asking for information. But basically, what happened was we had an individual turn in some areas that had dumps on them. Apparently, the way I understand, somebody confessed to the issue or, or didn't, and this is on BLM property, it was turned over to BLM, and there was no conviction. But could we get a clarification to see if anybody was ever convicted on this?
I think we could. I had to go through your office. Your staff looked it up and handled the complaint from the, from the gentleman and gave me the police report that's there and all the other backup.
Could we possibly, ERACE is under Steve Lutowski. I think he pulled together some information, or even Todd Davidson might be in the, in the audience.
Chairman Watson, Supervisor Johnson, yes, I'd like to call our ERACE coordinator, Todd Davidson, up. He would be able to speak specific to this particular case. I believe it's under ERACE record, 2015-112, a case by which ERACE was the initial notifying agency, but as County Administrator Hendricks pointed out, when the incident was found to have occurred on BLM federal lands, ERACE turned the case over to BLM. From that point on, I'd like to defer to Mr. Davidson, Officer Davidson, for some clarification as far as whether he is aware with certainty that the case was successfully prosecuted.
Okay. Mr. Davidson?
Mr. Chairman, maybe if I can, we have our Board Attorney, Mr. Esklin, here. Mr. Esklin, did you request that we pull off the police report that had the informant's name on it?
I did, I did.
I don't know what more we need. I mean, if this person was named as the informant, the person was prosecuted, that's pretty much it, no matter what anybody else has to say. I mean.
And did we get a conviction?
Then we got a conviction.
Mr. Davidson?
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. This case, I, I don't really know the results of this case because it wasn't an ERACE case. We, we initially handed it off to BLM and haven't taken part in anything after that, and we're not necessarily notified by the County Attorney's Office to what happens to a case that's handled by another agency. So that's why I'm a little confused on how we pay out rewards to other departments that we're not even informed about what happens with that case. So to answer your question, I don't know what happened with that case.
Chairman Watson, if I may, I can easily find out if there was a conviction or not. It's pretty straightforward. It's not, if you want, I can look into it. I could ask somebody to do it right now. Well, I don't know if I want to do it right now, but.
Yeah.
If you give me some time, we can, we can figure, we can answer that. that question.
Chairman Watson?
Supervisor Johnson first?
Just had this sent to me, from Mojave County Attorney's Office. State versus Jesus Martinez Mejia. It is my understanding that witness to illegal dumping may be eligible for sufficient, oh, I could go farther across, eligible for reward where sufficient information is given at least to successful prosecution. In this case, to the information given to law enforcement, a suspect was successfully identified, the suspect subsequently pleaded guilty to one count criminal littering on August 15th, '27, signed by Reed, sorry, Weisenberg Deputy County Attorney. So we have that.
Okay. Thank you. That's more than I knew before this meeting. And I, if the board so chooses, we can certainly take care of the issue.
Okay. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes, I think the reward should be paid to this person, but I also think that we need to tighten up what we mean by reward, otherwise we're going to be handing out rewards for the Department of Public Safety and the BLM, and, you know, this is just a county reward for the E-Race program, and I think that verbiage needs to be tightened up in the future, but in this case, I think we should pay it.
Very good. I agree. I think we should. The intent of the dollars that I funded the $500 with, I don't care who handles it, as long as we get somebody caught and convicted, and get the message out to the community that it's no longer acceptable to trash Mojave County. So, with that.
And one more addition, I think somehow, in the sentencing, that the suspect that's been convicted should have to reimburse the reward so that we can give it out to the next person.
Well, that's an issue we can bring up at a later date when we readdress the issue.
Right, because we don't have a pot of money to take reward money out of right now.
I think the only pot of money was the $500, so.
Your pocket.
Supervisor Johnson, did you have a motion you'd like to entertain?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we direct staff to proceed with the reimbursement of, not reimbursement, but the issuance of the award for trash informant.
Illegal dumping? Okay, very good. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any further discussion or questions? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carried unanimously. I'm sorry, I apologize to Wayne Hollins for not being able, for not bringing you up to speak to this issue. I apologize.
Wayne Hollins, 4825 North Mormon Flat, Golden Valley. I appreciate having a reward. I think we definitely need to figure out how to give it out, and make sure it's attainable to be given out, not such high things that we never, that just sits there, so. And after collecting 206,000 pounds of trash out of Golden Valley, we need something to help, and this will be just one more step into making it better.
Yes, and we'll be readdressing that. Thank you. Now onto item number 30. Discussion possible action, approving utilizing Mojave Educational Services Cooperative, contract number 17A-ESI-0518, the recruitment services with Educational Services, Inc., of Scottsdale, Arizona, and execute the agreement for the employee staffing of Mike Hendricks as county administrator, county engineer, for the estimated amount of 168,133.06. In addition, approve the county paying Arizona State Retirement System required alternative contribution rate of 9.49 percent, and for the estimated amount of 13,997.75 payable to the ASRS. Funding will be sourced from county administration, 70 percent, engineering, 20 percent, and the television improvement district, 10 percent. At this time, I'll make a motion for the approval of item 30. We do have one person signed up to speak to it.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Okay. Person signed up to speak to item number 30 is LeAnn Hoagland-Smith.
LeAnn Hoagland-Smith, 3981 South Centennial, Golden Valley, and this is my last time up here. Noted management guru Peter Drucker said, "Leadership is all about results," and it's those results that I am questioning regarding the continuation of this contract. The audit reports, those are fascinating readings, since 2013, show repetitive issues within the county. President Truman said, "The buck stops here," and this is under the purview of the current administrator. Why haven't these issues been corrected? They are repetitive. During my research, I found a comment by Mr. Hendricks, who was not county administrator at the time, who said Golden Valley Improvement District is, has immense potential for growth. I guess what was happening at that time, Dorado Development wanted to help buy water for Golden Valley. Under his leadership and management, GVID lost money, and for several years, and has not grown, as many people have just already testified. The contract through Mojave Educational Services, another point of concern. First, this agency is a temporary employment and recruitment firm, and most recruitment contracts, when the client candidate is found, they're terminated. Since Mr. Hendricks was already an employee of the county, who then retired when he was appointed, how is this temporary? I'm a little confused. Firms such as Mojave Educational Services charge for recruitment at standard. Those fees range between 15 and 25 percent. I know I've been involved with them. And they end. Specific to the contract, MES is charging additional fee to monitor this. Checks are written to the educational services. I don't know what that annual fee is, but given my experience, it's not chump change, you know, given his current salary of $147,500 without benefits. When we start adding in the benefits, the retirement, the health care, the assigned car, the fuel, the cell phone, all add into this overall comprehension, and the results aren't delivered, I'm at a loss as to why we're continuing the contract, and then giving him a raise of approximately $18,997 in retirement income alone. Again, this salary is many times the average per capita income from Mojave County. Repeat, 20 percent poverty rate, annual per capita income under $22,000. As said before, government should consider experience, education, results, and the income of its constituents. To approve this increase, given the ongoing deficit, we hear about that all the time, only grows government at the expense of the taxpayers' pocketbooks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Chairman Watson, did I miss something? We're not giving a raise.
No.
We're not giving a raise.
Mr. Chairman, there were a lot of incorrect statements said there, and, you know, maybe it's an education process, and in the advertising, we could have done better so that the people out there knew that, no, there is no increase, I haven't asked for an increase since I've been hired. I pay my own insurance, which is about $15,000 a year. I don't get any retirement, I have no golden parachute, you know, it's, I am saving the county if you were going to hire a regular employee, which you could hire me now, today, into the county system, and I would be collecting retirement and collecting a matching contribution from Mojave County, which I'm not. But I am saving the county, I believe, about $57,000 by going through ESI, and we've already thrown this through legal, and it is a legal way to handle this particular service. But thank you for your comments.
I never asked this, how much do we pay ESI? Is it monthly? Is it just?
It's, if we could ask finance, because finance and procurement put the contract together, but it's between 2 and 4 percent, it's not 15 percent. Could you help me out with that, Coral? And I would like to mention, even with that contribution, because the county's paying less in the alternate contribution rate to the county retirements, the state retirement system, it still results in a savings to the county of $5,700.
Good morning, Chairman Watson, Supervisor Angus. The fee that the county would pay to Mojave would be $5,900 for the administrative fee.
A year?
Mm-hmm.
A year. So that kind of washes out what we save?
Yeah, the overall savings by doing this versus hiring a county administrator at the same rate of pay is a savings of $5,713.
And that includes what we give ESI?
Yes, it includes all of that.
Thank you.
Can I clarify your questions?
Okay.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify too, we also get an engineer out of that, too.
Correct.
Thank you, Mike.
We get a two for, is that correct? All right.
And also, let me throw in there that Mr. Hendricks is working at a salary much less than all of the surrounding communities and counties of our size. So, thank you, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. Hendricks. There being no further questions, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed? No opposed? Motion carried.
However, I do believe two supervisors did not vote.
All right, then I'll call for a, call for the vote by Supervisor, Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Yes. Supervisor Bishop?
Yes.
Is it yes? Supervisor Angus?
Mine's a yes, but I'd like to make a caveat that I don't like private contracts with, we can debate the double dipping, but I think County Administrator Hendricks has done a fine job and deserves to be, has this contract re-upped, so thank you.
Thank you. And my vote is yes. That makes it a unanimous decision. Okay, on to item number 31. Discussion possible action, set a public hearing for December 4th regarding the acceptance of Commerce Way from Mojave Airport Drive to Bonanza Way, Columbus Way from Commerce Lane to Railroad Drive, Railroad Drive from Bonanza Way, 800 feet north, Bonanza Way from Shipping Lane to Railroad Drive, and Industrial Boulevard from Santa Fe Drive to 940 feet south, totaling 1.60 miles into the Mojave County Regular Roadway Maintenance System as paved roadways, and further direct Mojave County Engineer to file with Board of Supervisors a report and map of the proposed roadway and give proper notice to the public hearing.
Chairman Watson, I move that we set a public hearing for December 4th.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second for setting a public hearing? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. On to item number 32. Discussion possible action, acknowledge the receipt and refer to public works petition to Mojave County Board of Supervisors requesting W. Zentif Drive from Indian Wells Road in the eastward direction to South Sacramento Road, approximately 2,635 feet, in the general east-to-west course of direction, be accepted in the Mojave County Road System for regular maintenance in the Mojave Golden Valley area.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we approve. Item number 32 is written.
We have a motion?
A second.
And a second? Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? And those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. On to item number 33. Discussion possible action, consider Mojave County's position, settlement negotiations and strategies.
Chairman Watson, I believe there's no action to be taken on this.
I believe you're correct. No action. Item number 34. Discussion possible action, continue to reschedule one of the December board meetings for motion directing staff to work with Fort Mojave, Mojave Valley Community Park Committee, come back with the, to the board with an amendment to the April 6, 2015 Park Development Agreement. Proposed amendment was necessary to extend, clarify, or effectuate the purposes of the agreement to the board's debate and consideration for approval.
Chairman Watson, I make a motion that we continue to the second board meeting in December.
Okay, we have a motion to continue this item?
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Any further discussion? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. On to item number 35. Discussion possible action, direct staff to program a capital improvement project to expand and enhance performance of the Horizon 6 County Improvement District Booster Station to install two fire flow pumps, augmenting the station's four domestic demand pumps, and further execute requisite engineering design to be funded by the district's maintenance reserve funds, water infrastructure finance authority grants, and/or the internal loan as needed to remediate the standing of free flow deficiency in Horizon 6. Mr. Latauski?
Unless there's discussion, I make motion approved.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for the approval? You can remain seated then. Thank you. There being no further discussion, those in favor signify by, I'm sorry, wait one moment. Mr. Robinson? Is Mr. Robinson still here?
No, he's gone.
Okay, I let the record know that Mr. Robinson wanted to speak to 35, and he's not here. Okay. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carried. Motion for adjourned. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much, it's been fun today.